This is a little different than anything that the Finance Committee has done in the past. So I'm sure it's gonna, it'll have its quirks, but like I said, the wave is appreciated and any raucousness is fine. Just by member introductions, my name's Peter Roach, I'm the Chair.
My name is Ron McKay, I'm on the Finance Committee.
My name's Doug White, I'm on the Finance Committee.
You are also the clerk.
I am?
You are.
Oh, still? Okay. I feel clerk-y.
I don't know if you guys mind just giving a quick, you know, overview of how long you've each been on the committee, why you chose to join, just to kind of give the members of a public a little bit of background about yourselves before we move into the new member applications.
Let you guys go first.
Doug White, I've been living in Dayton for 27 years. I raised my six children here. They're all adults now, so I have a little time on my hands. I agreed to be on the Finance Committee because I wanted to give back to the town that I've lived in and raised my children in. I'm also a financial advisor and I have experience with employee benefits and retirement plans and that kind of thing. So I want to give back to the town that I live in.
My name is Ron McKay. I've been in Dayton since 2004. I'm originally from Chicago, so it's a big difference. And I love it here. It's just a pleasure to be living here and enjoying such a great town. And like Doug, I want to go ahead and give back to my community too, especially when times are hard as far as trying to make decisions and things like that. My background is, right now I currently work at Brown University in IT, but I've always been part of budgeting. It's a big part of IT. And so I just want to go ahead and give back. And I've been with the Finance Committee for a year, so I hope to continue.
Peter Roach, I have been in Dayton since 2004 also. My two kids went through school here and are done. I'm a CPA. I've been on the Finance Committee for, I think it's 14 years now, 14, 15 years. Basically, the year that I stopped running Dayton baseball is the year I started on the committee. And I think I've been the chairman now for four years since Ed Swartz moved down to Falmouth. And again, this is in the same reason and hopefully the reasons that anybody would be looking at joining the FinCom is that you're looking to give back to the community, help. And you know, it's, it's a way that you can do it that is, I feel, a great benefit to the town.
Thank you all. I really appreciate it. I know this is, like Peter said, this is a little different than I think what everyone's used to. So next, we're gonna, we're gonna interview, we have four potential new candidates for the Finance Committee. One person who did apply was unable to make it. He did have a work obligation that caused him to have to leave town for a few days. I don't mean this in a specific way, but I'm also not of the attitude of some of the other, the way other appointments are done in town. I totally understand that people have professional obligations and we can't always be in certain places at certain times. I also, just for full disclosure, I'm not a big fan of gotcha moments, and I understand that some people might be exceptional servants of the town but might not be great public speakers or nervous in a setting. And I also feel that the Finance Committee especially is a research-based committee. It's not a knee-jerk reaction-on-the-spot type of committee. So I sent all of the applicants a list of questions which they would be asked tonight, and I asked them to actually prepare. So with that being said, the first, I'm gonna, I'm gonna read off for the first applicant, which was Thomas Arujo.
Can you mind if I just throw one more thing in there?
Sure.
And just, just so everybody's aware, that the way that the Finance Committee is formed each year, it's the moderator's responsibility to form the committee. From, once, once he picks the up to seven members that are on the committee, then it, then if there are any openings, the Finance Committee from July 1st up until the next town meeting has the ability to fill any empty seats. And some years we've been able to fill them, some years we haven't. Right now, we have two, two openings as things stand right now going into town meeting. But for, for reasons, we kept them, kept those two spots open. But so, town meeting, it's Kevin's responsibility, the moderator's responsibility.
Good point. Thank you for adding that in. So I'll, I'll read off Mr. Arujo's replies. So question one was, please introduce yourselves and tell us about your Dayton history, anything that you'd like to share, how long you've lived here, hobbies, involvement in town, et cetera. His reply was, my name is Thomas Arujo, and I have lived in or owned property in Dayton all of my life. I was a legal resident of Taunton from 1983 to 2001, but still had an interest in, in family property. My grandparents purchased our farm on William Street in 1927, and the property is still owned by the family. I am proud to call Dayton home and plan to stay here through the end of my life. Other than participating in town events, I have never been involved in organizing or working any events. Now that I am entering retirement, I plan on being an active participant in town government and the community. Question two was, what made you apply to be a member of the Finance Committee? And in your own words, what is the role of the Finance Committee? His reply was, I have always wanted to participate in town government. However, being a single father, working and traveling five days a week into Boston, and maintaining a farm did not allow enough time to commit to a position in town government. I am semi-retired now and have time to commit. I see things going on in town that I question. I want to understand what is going on and try to help the town on the best path forward. The town website indicated that the Finance Committee is responsible for submitting recommendations on a budget and other financial warrant articles to town meetings. I am not sure how to say this in my own words, and I am not sure what else the committee may be involved in. Question three was, please tell us about your professional background and any skills that you possess that you believe are beneficial as a member of the Finance Committee? His reply was, I am a, I am an accountant by training, and my career has been in corporate accounting and baking slash finance. While I do not have any government accounting experience, I do understand the basics of it, and I understand how fund accounting is used. I did take a graduate-level course in nonprofit slash government accounting. I believe that along with common sense, my professional background would be useful to the committee. Question four was, do you have any previous experience as a member of a committee or a board, either town-related or not? His reply was, I do not have any experience with any town or governmental committees, and I have not been on any boards, but have been on various committees in the corporate environment. I have, I have been on committees outside of work. One example is I head the committee for the DR class of 1976 high school reunions. We have had a successful reunion every five years since graduating. Question five, working on a committee requires teamwork and often compromise. How well do you work in a team setting, and how do you deal with opinions that differ from yours? His reply was, I've learned a long time ago the importance of teamwork. Teamwork is how successful individuals and organizations thrive. I am a true team player and always have an open mind and want to understand different opinions. If someone has a different opinion, view, or approach, I do my best to understand that and always look for an opportunity to learn from other people. Question six was, as we all know, Dayton is facing some difficult financial challenges. However, we still need to address different needs of the town. What, if any, are projects or initiatives in town that you feel need to be addressed? His reply was, I believe that the town has issues with meeting its future debt obligations and has tax rates on the higher end compared to other towns in Massachusetts. We need to make sure we can service our obligations, provide adequate services for the town, and keep a sensible tax rate. And then I, there was a section for closing statements where he just, he had replied, I love Dayton and want to participate in helping the town move forward on a sustainable path. I would like to thank the Finance Committee and Kevin Smith for the time in looking at My original intention was to go into alphabetical order, but I didn't staple them together that way for the committee, so we're not, we're gonna go out of order. Ha ha, surprise, got you guys. So Tracy, I don't want to butcher your last name on camera or in front of everybody. As long as I, as long as I've known you, I don't know the pronunciation of your last name. But what I will ask is each applicant, if you can come up to the podium, just so the microphone can pick up.
Can everybody just hear me?
Yeah.
It's pretty good. The mic's pretty good, though.
Yeah.
All right.
So if you want to just start off, introduce yourself first, and then I'll ask you the questions, and you can give the reply.
Do you want me to give my last name? So you know how to pronounce it? Okay. My name is Tracy Carol Sick. It's broken down by two pieces. I have been a Dyson, Dayton resident for seven years. In the seven years with the people that I've met and the friends that I've made and the stories I've heard, seven years is considered a newbie. So I consider myself a newbie to Dayton. I'm originally from New Haven, Connecticut, lived most of my life in California. In 2009, I moved to Florida, where I reconnected with my high school sweetheart who lived in Dayton, and I had the opportunity to come back to New England, which I love. So I moved to Dayton in 2017 and absolutely love being here.
Thank you.
For the rest, I have to wear my reading glasses. I'm sorry. Do you want me just to go through?
Was that your reply for question one? Or were you just giving me a little general background?
Yeah, introduce myself.
Yeah. So, all right, we'll go, we're just gonna move right on to question two then.
Okay.
What made you apply to be a member of the Finance Committee? And in your own words, what is the role of the Finance Committee?
Okay. So I currently am on the Friends of the Dayton Library. And in doing so, my interest has grown into being on other committees of Dayton. However, in my search for what committee would serve me best as well as serving best to the community, when the Finance Committee position opened, I felt that with my background, I would serve best on that committee. So I applied to be on that committee, or hopefully be on that committee. Finance is actually, in my background, is, it's actual versus predictions and plannings. So departments submit budgets based on what they need now to financially operate and maintain their budgets, as well as predicting and or planning for additional needs in the upcoming year. Those budgets are then compiled, thoroughly reviewed, and discussed with recommendations. Once completed and balanced, the budget is presented at the annual town meeting. So that's my basic concept of what a Finance Committee is. Question three was, please tell us about your professional background and any skills that you possess that you believe are beneficial as a member of the Finance Committee. I don't have a college degree. I'm 59 years old. I have 40 years of accounting experience, though. I started at age 14. My parents purchased a bakery where I worked six days a week, and my pay at that time was donuts and cookies. But in having that experience, I quickly learned finance of a business and customer service. So, you know, throughout my years of working, I was fortunate enough to have mentors that taught me finance. I took a few accounting courses at a local college, just basic accounting. But primarily, it was from being mentored and self-teaching myself. So that is my basic background in, in accounting. I currently am a practice manager at a veterinary clinic in Somerset. When I started as practice manager, I actually was a customer service person. I wanted to just do customer service. In 2019, the owner of the business sold to a very large corporation out of Connecticut. They came in and they said, you've been here the longest, you have financial background, congratulations, you're now the practice manager. 15 months later, the pandemic hit, and I lost a full-time doctor and a part-time doctor, and then had to deal with the pandemic, and had a business that grossed $1.3 annual revenue. In 2023, still having only one full-time doctor, I was able to manage revenue of $2.4 million. So I love a challenge. And it's basically through mentoring and learning that I've learned finance and budgeting. Question four, do you have any previous experience as a member of a committee or a board? I currently serve as vice chair for the Friends of the Dayton Library. Question five, working on a committee requires teamwork and often compromise. How well do you work in a team setting, and how do you deal with opinions that differ from yours? Simply put, there's no I in the word team. I learned long ago that you have to, in order for one person to be successful, it takes many people to be successful underneath you. I started with a quote 25 years ago that I've carried with me, and it's actually in my veterinary clinic on a board, and it's by Henry Ford. And it says, "If there is any one secret of success, it lies in the ability to get the other person's point of view and see things from that person's angle as well as yourself." The $2.4 million in revenue that we succeeded to have in 2024 was not because of me. It was because of my team. And so I believe in a team setting, everyone can be successful. Question six, as we all know, Dayton is facing some difficult financial challenges. However, we still need to address different needs of the town. What, if any, are projects or initiative in town that you feel need to be addressed? This was a question that I thought long and hard about. You know, if I was a mom with school-aged children, I could say we need newer, bigger elementary and middle schools. I'm a mom of a teenage son who goes to DR. I feel like we need to have more programs at DR to initiate higher enrollment. I live on Tremont Street, where I recently learned that they're gonna build 90 new houses that are gonna butt to my property. How are we gonna accommodate for that? How are we gonna accommodate the needs of those 90 new families? In thinking about all that, I couldn't come up with one answer, because the answer is many. I think there are many challenges that we're facing, and I don't think there's just one project or one initiative. I think there's many. But you can only take one challenge at a time, and you have to prioritize what those challenges and the needs of the town are. As many of you, I'm sure you have your own opinions of what the needs and the projects and the initiatives should be in this town based on your personal lives. So with that being said, said, and having so many different things, the growth in Dayton has typically been 1% a year. With the new houses that have been built, new houses that are still being built, new communities or developments that are being done, that growth is probably gonna double or triple in a very short amount of time. I think everybody can probably see that. And so with that comes greater and larger expenses that we need to look at. So as we look at financial challenges just of today, I think we also need to look at the financial, financial needs and challenges of the near future, and how this will have an effect on various departments in our community, such as police, fire, maintenance, and education. So I don't have one answer for that. Does anybody have any other questions? I want to thank all of you for giving me the opportunity to interview today.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right, next up on Application Roulette.
I'll just go.
It's you.
Yeah.
All right, I'm gonna let you read the questions, though.
Okay. Now we gotta flip that.
First one's easy. It's an introduction. So my name is Jake Stebbins. My wife, daughter, and I moved in January of 2021 to Dayton. I live in the Council Oak neighborhood around the corner off Main Street. You know, we love it here. Since we've been here, I've had a son. The community here is, is just fantastic. We moved here because my wife has begrudgingly made me, you know, like an outdoorsy guy. We now have chickens and a massive garden, and, you know, all that fun stuff that being in, you know, right to farm and, and a rural community allows us to do. So we love that, and we just, we just want to keep that whole, yeah. So just as my introduction, if you want to go to the next one.
So what made you apply to be a member of the Finance Committee? And in your own words, what is the role of the Finance Committee?
Yeah, I think what I loved when I originally got to experience our first town meeting in 2021 was learning about the role the Finance Committee had in helping the town navigate, you know, what I consider right now are very difficult financial situations, not just that our town is facing, but every town in Massachusetts, and I'm sure outside of our state is facing as well. The importance of the Finance Committee in my mind is to make rational and numbers-based decisions around where our budget and funding is going to for each different department. We take out the personal opinions that we may have around anything that has to do with politics or anything like that, and we look at spreadsheets and numbers, and I love that about that. The reason that I think I would be a good fit as we move into the next question is, I've been doing small business budgeting for 15 years. I work for a company that does payroll, employee benefits, workers' compensation insurance, planning, and really employee budgets, and it's been a blast. I work from home, so I'm constantly in the community, which I really, really love. I have a business economics degree from Rutgers University, and I also moonlight as a fractional CRO for a couple of my buddy's businesses, which I love. So my, my biggest thing is, I want to take what I've learned in my world and apply it as much as possible to the town's problems.
Want me to skip to five?
Yeah, sure.
Do you have more for four?
Um, I think, yeah, I would say that was three.
You covered three.
Yeah.
So do you have any previous experience as a member of a board?
So I did actually serve on the Finance Committee for one year, and I'm excited to be back, obviously. That's why I'm here. So I'm definitely looking forward to that. I've also served on a couple of nonprofit boards for my clients that I've done work with over the years. Again, mainly in a budgeting capacity.
So working on a committee requires teamwork and often compromise. How well do you work in a team setting, and how do you deal with opinions that differ, differ from yours?
I think what I like about committees in general and having people from different backgrounds is we have different experience that we can pull on, right? One person is never gonna know the solution to all the problems. So being able to back up your opinions or bring new ideas that have basis in fact and a financial impact that can be measured is really, really important. And so I'm always looking for, you know, new ideas, or if somebody has a, you know, a clarifying question and things like that, you know, there is, in my mind, there's really no too silly of a question. I've listened to the majority of the, the BOS and FinCom meetings by dialing in via Zoom, just so I could kind of stay focused in where I understood what was going on. And I think every question that's been asked has been valid. Like, we need to, we need, there's no stone unturned at this point in time. So having everybody, having a full committee, which is gonna be very, very important, and being able to rely on other people to ask the questions that maybe others might not know to ask or be afraid to ask is really important.
As we all know, Dayton is facing some difficult financial challenges. However, we still need to address different needs of the town. What, if any, are projects or initiatives in town that you feel need to be addressed?
Yeah, I mean, we're, we're in a tough spot, right? We, we've lost a lot of COVID funding, of state funding, that we had come to rely on over the last three or four years. And my general kind of thoughts around the way that the town would operate, you know, I want really basic community services. I want, you know, public, I want a safe community. I would like clean water, right? I would like clean air. I would like open spaces. I would like a sense of community and involvement, things that we can get involved in. So that is my mind, what we should bring to the table. When you're looking at budgeting for where, or at least my thoughts, when you're looking at budgeting, what we have for a budget versus what our budgeting sources and where our money sources are coming from, I think right now there's a huge gap that could be filled with additional revenue streams. And some of the things that we had discussed was like reaching out to SOEM and getting people to come here so that, you know, our firecracker festivals are big or better, bringing additional revenue into the town. I think that there's things that we can do that we haven't explored yet that could potentially fill in some of these gaps in the budgets that we're facing right now. And so I think it's just a matter of coming up with plans and thinking outside of the box, so that we can have even more services, have more things that the town can do without having to cut back from other departments to fulfill those needs.
Do you have any closing statements you'd like to make?
No, I mean, I'm, you know, excited to, to be able to interview today. Appreciate the thoughts and, and, you know, wonderful to meet the two of you. You know, Peter I bug on a regular basis, so he's probably sick of me, which is fine. But, you know, nice to see everybody, and thanks.
Thank you very much. Mr. Carpenter, how are you?
I'm good.
You are next.
Good evening, everybody. My name's David Carpenter. I live at 1595 William Street in Dayton. Pretty much a lifelong Dayton resident. I say lifelong, but I moved to the Cape in 1982 for a while. We lived down there, and I ended up back here in 2001 after my father passed, just so I could keep an eye on, help my mother with the house and so forth. But I've always been here in Dayton, you know, it's, it's a place that I grew up in. It's a place I really enjoyed growing up in. You know, I mean, it's, believe me, the changes I've seen in the last, you know, 40 years are just astounding. So primarily, I've been a construction laborer for the first probably 28 years of my life. Due to some minor injuries, I had to refocus my talents, so I had to send myself back to school. I got an accounting degree, and I've been doing accounting for various industries since. I've worked for attorneys, engineering firms, giant developers. I worked for a developer in Rentham. I've worked for local construction companies. I have a broad breadth of experience with a lot of different industries. I've had to do a lot of budgeting. I've had to do a lot of expense analysis. We've had to do payroll in almost every position I've ever had. So I mean, that's, that, I don't think you can do accounting without touching on payroll. You know, you just can't. Employee benefits are not my strongest suit. I mean, I have done them, but it's been a while since I've had to, like, deal with employee benefit retirement plans, things of that nature. God bless you for being able to do it, 'cause wow, it was something I didn't really enjoy as, as much as other aspects of accounting. But I just really want to help the town of Dayton any way I can.
So kind of, I'll still ask, you know, question two.
Sure.
You touched on it a little bit, but what made you apply to be a member of the Finance Committee? And in your own words, what is the role of the Finance Committee?
Well, to me, the role of the Finance Committee is to help the town move forward the best way possible to try and find a path through uncertain economic times. For me, the Finance Committee should be keep, keeping its hand on the tiller in terms of guiding where the money should go, in terms of an, and I'm gonna say probably a 10-year outlook. I know that we have a capital outlay committee that, you know, looks sort of into the future, but I think we need to kind of set some longer-term goals. I feel that the experience I've had, my skills, I have an attention for detail, again, accountant. I think it's really kind of, takes a certain personality trait to do accounting, and a lot of, a lot of us tend to be very detail-oriented, tend to be analytical. And I feel like my skills and my experience would be of benefit to serving on the committee. tend to be analytical, and I feel like my skills and my experience would be of benefit to serving on the committee.
You're doing good at like jumping to the, getting the next, like, you know, getting the next question in the, in the current question. So I'm going to skip over to four, because you, you kind of answered your professional background and skills that you possess that are beneficial. Um, so do you have any previ- previous experience as a member of a, of a committee or a board, either town-related or not?
Um, I have served on some other small ad hoc committees for uh, the engineering firm and for the attorney. Um, we had to uh, actually do a small committee to kind of work through uh, the IOTA accounts for some of our clients and help them move forward, so. I'm very um, happy to be doing the uh, the fund, the trust fund accounting. Uh, that's one of the things I actually found the most exciting. It's like solving a puzzle, basically, and you can do that. Um, I've served on this finance committee briefly from twenty-two to twenty-three. I just wasn't reappointed last year. So I'm looking forward to maybe stepping up again, because I really do want to help the town.
Working on a committee requires teamwork and often compromise. How well do you work in a team setting? And how do you deal with opinions that differ from yours?
Well, honestly, I think the first thing that I try to remember is we're all pushing the same bowler up the same hill and we're all trying to achieve the same goal. So we may not always get there, uh, following the same path, but I think we all have the same ultimate goal in mind, and it's just a matter of listening. I would rather be a listener than a talker mostly, because I like to hear other people's points of view, because sometimes it helps me form my own opinions. So I think that's probably one of the best things that I look forward to doing is hearing how other people would like to solve problems as well.
As we all know, Dayton is facing some difficult financial challenges. However, we still need to address different needs of the town. What, if any, are projects or initiatives in town that you feel need to be addressed?
Well, I think we have long-term issues here that are going to take probably ten to fifteen years to sort through. We're a town that's really starting to grow, and I think it's going to grow more than, than three percent in the next ten years. I think it's going to be more like five to ten. I really feel like we don't have the infrastructure right now to support that, and I feel like the town needs to try to balance the financial needs of our current community and have an eye towards the future with trying to flesh out our infrastructure so that we can sustain some better growth. And I think uh, we need to all try to work towards solutions that will help us get there.
Do you have any closing statement you'd like to make?
No, honestly, I just want to say thank you to everybody. It's nice to meet the, some of the newer members of the finance committee. Last year, I didn't get a chance to, um, I was kind of laid up for a little while, but uh, I'm back on two legs. Life is good. So I look forward to maybe joining you guys very soon. Thank you.
Very good. Just to kind of add a note, I, I let the current members know and that, and the applicant members who submitted applications that there's no intention of making any decision tonight. I'm going to let the current members kind of deliberate. And then also too, whether you want to make it now, we do have a section for public input. So if anybody wants to provide public input on any particular applicant, um, or you can also reach out to me via email or by phone if you, you know. Public input is very, very important to me. I think every single one of us is here to represent the town, not represent our own ideas or interests. So um, I, I welcome members of the community to provide input on who they would like to see represent them as finance committee members as well, so.
I think the, the next part we want to do with the, go over uh?
Yeah, so after this, um, so I, I didn't know if, if Doug and Ron wanted, how, if you guys wanted to stick around for mock town meeting, but we technically could, you could adjourn this meeting. You're more, obviously more than welcome to stay and we'll run through, I have a little slideshow and we'll go through some of the steps of town meeting. But I think for all intensive purposes, you could, you know, end the meeting if you'd like.
Um, just for administrative reasons, I will take a motion to adjourn the finance committee meeting.
I second that motion.
Oh, actually, you have to make the motion, right?
I have to make the motion, okay.
And then I'll, and I'll second it.
I make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
And I second it.
All in favor, I post, yes, have it. We're done.
Thank you very, very much. Appreciate it. We'll take like a two-minute intermission just to get myself set up. I want to make sure I can screen share, and then I'll kind of jump into um, our mock town meeting.
All right. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the twenty twenty-four Dayton Mock Town Meeting. I am your town moderator, Kevin Smith, Jr. Um, I, I wanted to put this together because I thought it would be helpful, not just for the community, but also for myself as a first-time moderator, um, to kind of work through some of the steps and go over some of the lingo that we encounter um, at town meeting. Um, I put together a little bit of a slideshow for everybody so we can kind of go over some of who's who, um, and some of the terms, and then we'll work through some um, practice warrant articles. Um, so first off, I know one of the first times I went, attended a town meeting, I didn't really know who was up there and why they were up there. Um, so first, um, you have the town moderator, um, who is the presiding officer over the town meeting. And some of the duties the town moderator is tasked with are announcing business before the voting body, uh, receive and submit all motions or propositions presented, put to vote all questions which are moved, and keeping order in decorum during uh, and throughout the meeting. The town clerk is also present, and they are the recording officer for town meeting. He or she is tasked with recording the minutes for the meeting, along with acting as the custodian of all documents pertaining to the town meeting. The finance committee is present. Members of the finance committee provide recommendation and information on all budget-related articles. They also provide recommendations for any article which calls for the appropriation of borrowing of three hundred dollars or more. The recommendations typically include, typi- the recommendations typically include their position on the proposed article as well as their recommendation for a funding source. And when we move into the example warrant articles, like you'll see that and as the, when, when the warrant gets posted for the town, you'll typically see underneath that the finance committee recommends and where that money comes from. Um, same goes for the Board of Selectmen. So members of the Board of Selectmen also provide their recommendations on all financial-related articles, much like the finance committee. They will also provide recommendations on other proposed warrants such as additions, amendments, or repeals of bylaws in most circumstances. The town administrator is typically present, and they'll often provide additional information regarding certain warrant, warrant articles as he or she acts as the chief financial and operating officer of the town. They may have valuable information pertaining to various warrant articles presented at the town meeting. The town accountant is present, and they are available to provide valuable information regarding uh, account balances and available funds for various financial-related warrant articles presented at the town meeting. And then last, we have town council. And town council not only helps the town prepare the warrant for town meeting, but is also in attendance to provide any answers for legal questions which may arise during the course of the meeting. Um, and that could be right down to the way a cer- a certain vote needs to be handled or any other issues that arise. Next, we'll go over um, some commonly used town meeting terms and phrases. These are a handful of common terms and phrases that are used throughout the course of town meeting. Many of them are in reference to specific funding sources available um, for the various articles presented. Others reference the collection of taxes, and I'm going to lean on, on Peter a little bit for some of these. Some of these are pretty, pretty simple and easy to understand. Um, one thing that was kind of funny for me when I first got involved too was not, I, the fiscal year, not so much what it was, but when it was. Um, so the fiscal year is a twelve-month period, beginning on July first and ending on June thirtieth of the following year, to which the annual budget applies, and at the end of which a government unit determines its financial position and the results of its operation. The number attached to the letters FY represents the calendar year in which fiscal year ends. For example, FY twenty is the fiscal year that begins July first, two thousand nineteen, and ends June thirtieth, two thousand twenty. Raise and appropriate um, is a phrase used to identify a funding source for an expenditure which refers to money generated by tax levy or other local receipts. Um, and, and Peter, at any point, if you want to kind of give a little bit more on any one of them, just let me know.
Yeah, I guess I always think of raise and appropriate as it's money that's coming, that, that's what you're going to be paying a tax on next year.
So levy or property tax levy is the revenue a community can raise through real and personal property taxes?
There are limits set by the state.
Yeah, and our next one was the levy limit, which is the maximum the levy can be get, in a given year is equal to the previous year's levy limit times two and a half percent plus new growth and amounts authorized by overrides. The levy limit is determined annually by the Department, uh, Massachusetts Department of Revenue. Um, that's a term that, I mean, you guys, you guys talk about that a lot in your finance committee meetings. It comes up a little bit in town meeting. Um, but that's just the maximum amount of, that the taxes can be raised in that given year.
That doesn't, that doesn't include possible exclusions or if you want to vote to go above the levy limit for any particular?
So anything above that would have to be a vote to agree to go over it.
Right, correct. Um, next, another one that pops up quite a bit um, is Chapter Seventy, which is a statute that describes the school funding formula and education aid distributed by the state. So you see that a lot associated with our school budgets. Um, and then Chapter Ninety comes up quite often, and that's funds distributed to cities and towns to uh, fund highway projects. Chapter Ninety is based on a formula consisting of uh, road, local mileage, local employment level, and population estimates. Um, most of the time when you see a road improvement project, um, Highway Superintendent Ferry uh, almost always references Chapter Ninety and kind of just go, alright, that sounds good. Another, next is we have a Community Preservation Act. I know in town we use the lingo of, you know, CPC, which references the committee, which is the Community Preservation Committee, who are simply the stewards of the CPA funds. The CPA helps communities preserve open space in historic sites, creates affordable housing, and develop outdoor recreational facilities. The CPA is funded through a local option surcharge on property tax bills and a state match on those surcharges. Um, for Dayton, there's an additional one percent that goes into CPA funds, which get collected for numerous projects. I mean, the purchase of two oh seven Main Street was partially done, or improvements, I should say, were done using CPA funds. North Dayton Playground, uh, improvements to Lincoln Village's electrical infrastructure. So there's a number of things that CPA funds um, are used for. Next, we have enterprise fund, which is a standalone fund with its own assets, liabilities, fund balance, revenues, and expenses in which a municipal service is operated as a business unit. Costs of the service are primarily recovered from user charges and may be supplemented by general revenues. Um, good example would probably be sewer, right? Would, and this is again, from my own knowledge.
So like cable count?
Okay, yeah, that was going to be my question.
Cable does not count because cable's funded solely by Comcast. Dayton Water, North Dayton Fire District, uh, electric, I believe, is also.
Next up, we have free cash, which is probably the most used term at town meeting. So free cash is certified as of July first by the state. Um, this is a portion of undesigned fund balance available for appropriation. It's not cash per se, but rather is the total of cash and receivables less current liabilities and earmarked reserves, reduced also by reserves for uncollected taxes. It's made up of turnbacks, um, which are unexpendited appropriations, revenues that came in higher than budgeted, and free cash carried forward from the prior fiscal year. And if Peter, if you could give that to us in English.
So, yeah, kind of a basic way to think about it. If um, permit fees, if, if we brought in more permit fees than we thought we were going to, that money is going to go to free cash because it's excess revenue. If the highway department spent ten thousand dollars less on fuel than they expected, than their budget called for, that ten thousand dollars is going to go into free cash. And what that means is it's money that's already been raised and appropriated in the case of an expense. Um, but now can be used for, in the following year, can be used for pretty much anything that the town decides. To use free cash, it's got to be a vote by the town.
Um, next, we have debt service, which is a payment of interest and principal related to um, debt. We have several of those that usually pop up, like the roof of the high school, police station bond.
We got one question out there.
We just have a question on free cash.
Sure.
Sometimes at the special town meeting, there'll be votes to allocate funds for a new project mid-year. Are there any limitations about, I mean, imagine, and I have, I'm trying to recall the town meetings, I've been to special town meetings, that you cannot raise and appropriate mid-year, that only free cash could be utilized mid-year? Is that a true statement?
Uh, it is not entirely true, but it mainly is true. Um, most of the time when the budget's set, we're, the raise and appropriate side of it, we're already at the limit. So for the most part, there's, by the time you get to special town meeting, there's nothing left in the levy limit to be able to raise and appropriate. So for the most part, once you get through the annual town meeting for twenty-five, that's going to be, for the most part, the end, the last shot at it.
Um, another big one, so back, just quickly back to debt service. So we see that come up a lot with the police station bond, um, the repairs to the high school, there's a handful of other small ones.
Yeah, yeah, so there's like, there's basically, the one that's, the towns are, are just in our budget is police, um, through this, through the schools budgets, we do have the two roofs, and um, there might be another, whether it was doors or something else through the, through the schools.
Do we have a fire truck one to tip?
With a lease on a fire truck, so we have to raise or use free cash each year for the lease payment.
Next up, which is another one that pops up quite a bit, um, in recent years, um, especially with, you know, solar, the solar industry kind of making its way through town, is payment in lieu of taxes or a pilot agreement, which is an agreement between a municipality and an entity not subject to taxation such as a charitable or educational organization, in which the payer agrees to make voluntary payments to the municipality. That's not the case with the solar. That's kind of the generic definition that obviously doesn't apply because a solar farm is not a charitable organization. I would assume most of them are.
Yeah, I would think not.
But uh, again, Peter and I spoke briefly before we started. I think you had a really good explanation for why, why a pilot agreement is beneficial.
So the general idea between, behind it, um, is that you're setting the tax rate on the equipment from the solar arrays for the next twenty years, and there's no fighting over the value of the equipment going forward. So um, we talked about one of the things with the desalination plant. Every three years, that's got to be reevaluated, and then they, they get taxed based on that value. And I would have to say that probably nearly every three years, there's a court case, because there's a disagreement on the, on the value. So with the, with the pilot agreements, there's no disagreement. It's the value is set for the next twenty years.
Yeah, and also just to kind of piggyback off of that too, there's also a time and financial savings for the Board of Assessors, because I know they have, have special groups come in to assess most of these large commercial properties, so in this case, they can.
Yeah, they don't have to worry about that.
Yeah, they don't have to worry about that. And I mean, at any point too, we're going through stuff. If somebody has a question, just raise your hand quick and stop me. Um, next up, uh, we have revolving fund. Um, I know we have one coming up at this town meeting where we're kind of adding on to that. So those funds may be used for special uses. For example, recreation fees may be paid into a revolving fund, and expenditures made without further appropriation. Uh, revolving funds are established by state law and town by law. Uh, we see several of those. Uh, Council on Aging has one. Um, the library has one, Parks and Rec, uh, Police Department. Um, and it's exactly as stated, you know, we're able to charge fees for certain um, services and then use those fees to supplement our budgets. Next one is kind of, is a big one, and for, I took some real general definitions and in the slideshow. In, in Dayton, it's a little bit different because we actually have two types of stabilization funds, so we'll break those out. Uh, Peter, give a little bit of a better explanation. So, but a stabilization fund in general is a fund designed to accumulate amounts for capital and other future spending purposes, although it may, it may not be appropriate. although it may, it may not be appropriated, it may be appropriated for any lawful purpose under Mass. General Law, Chapter forty. Section B, stabilization funds may be established for a different purpose, and interest generated by such funds is added to and becomes part of a stabilization fund. Two-thirds vote of town meeting is required to establish, amend the purpose of or appropriate money out of the stabilization fund. And the same thing. So for us, we have a stabilization fund, which I'll let you, we'll start off with stabilization and we'll roll into capital.
Stabilization is just a, in plain English, it's just a savings account, really. It's money that's set aside for rainy day. The state recommends roughly around twelve percent of annual budget be set aside in a stabilization fund. We're under that. I think we're at roughly, it might be nine percent now.
We're, prior to this year though, weren't we trending closer to what the recommendation?
Yeah, we were, we were moving, we were moving in that direction.
So and then next, we have a specific capitals, capital stabilization fund, which.
A capital stabilization fund was established to set money aside for capital projects. You know, if, if there is a fire truck that we need to buy, if there is a cruiser that we need to buy, school, if we needed to fund, if we needed to spend money on a school building itself. Anything capital. So for the most part, the town's definition of capital is roughly a five-year life or more.
Yeah, no, so also too, we have our, now we have, it's kinda newly established capital outlay committee, which kinda helps us forecast that process and prioritize. They have a grading scale. It's real similar to a grant process where they, you know, take in the project, grade it on a scale of priorities. And then, you know, in conjunction with the finance committee, will typically make a recommendation if a warrant article of that nature pops up before us at town meeting. Does anybody have any questions on any of the terminology?
So there is, there's an article on the warrant for this year to add, I think it was fifty thousand dollars into the stabilization, to the capital stabilization fund.
From free cash?
Uh, from free cash. You can, you can, I mean, you could raise and appropriate if you wanted to. I could tell that this year, there's no room in the budget to do anything like that. But typically, the money, the money that goes into either stabilization or capital stabilization comes from free cash.
Anyone else? Alright, so next we'll kinda move into town meeting procedures. We're gonna go through a few steps of town meeting, cover some of the basics around the warrant, and practice some of the different procedures, making motions, seconds, discussions, and amendments. Just quickly to go over the basics of who, who can attend town meeting. Just about anyone can attend. What you will notice when you walk in is there's typically a special section off to one side that's properly identified as the non-voter section. And that area is set aside for individuals in attendance who simply wish to observe or may have pertinent information for the town voters. With permission, they may be allowed to speak on specific warrant articles, but are not allowed to vote. We saw this at last year's annual when the library building project was, was approved. The engineering firm was in attendance, so we made a motion to allow them to speak on the motion and give any information if any questions arose. Same goes for even in the beginning of the meeting, where typically we'll have our building commissioner or, and our school superintendent give a report because they are not residents, is a motion made to allow them to speak as well. Who can vote? All registered voters of the town of Dyton can fully participate in the town meeting for making motions, participating in discussion, and voting on the articles themselves. What's the warrant? The warrant acts as the agenda for town meeting. It consists of a series of articles, which provide a general description of the action proposed. What's an article? An article contains the topic upon which town meeting will discuss and vote upon. We vote on the motions, not the articles. And when we get into some of the practice articles, you'll see that there's, you, the language gets changed a little bit from what's printed to what is motioned. So you're actually, we do have a couple different instances where we'll have, a question will arise where it's like, you know, is the motion as read or as spoken, because there's, you know, little discrepancies there, so. Alright, so with that, I'll make a motion and I'll work through some example articles together. I tried to lay this out. I did seven different articles, and they all kinda mimic closely what we typically do or what we're going to see at our upcoming annual town meeting. So the very first one, the article reads, "To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate and/or transfer from available funds the amount of eight thousand six hundred fifty dollars and forty-seven cents to pay prior year's bills or take any action relative thereto." And then it's toilet paper for one thousand four hundred and twenty-six dollars. Auto parts for twenty-six, ninety-six, thirty-three, envelopes for five, sixty-five, forty-four, and utility bills for three thousand nine hundred sixty-two, twenty-three. And yes, it did take me like, because I am not a member of the finance committee, it took me a minute to add them all up to make sure they added up to the total number. Think if, there's a handful of you who have been to town meeting before. Somebody wanna make a motion based off of that? We can work through it together. Or do you, actually, I'll start off with this one. So this one where it says, "To see if the town will vote to raise or appropriate." So in that instance, somebody.
Yeah, so I'll make a motion to raise and appropriate and/or transfer from available funds the amount of eight thousand six hundred fifty dollars and forty-seven cents to pay prior year's bills. And leave it open to a second, second.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion? Does the finance committee have a recommendation?
The finance committee would recommend that it come from free cash, the transfer from.
And if you don't mind also, just for the sake of conversation, this pops up every year. There's always prior year bills. Can you just give us a little bit of background on kinda why that happens and it's really a kind of a?
A lot, a lot of times, it's just a matter of a vendor sending a bill after the prior year's been closed. And once the year's closed, that the accountant can't make the payment without the town saying, yeah, it's okay, you, you could pay it. We did actually have an issue with a bill last year for some repairs on a service that was recommended we not pay it. And because the service wasn't provided, and they took two, they took six months to send the bill. So it didn't, it didn't pass, they didn't get paid.
Any other discussion?
I think it's just important for people to understand too, that like, when we're doing our budgeting, we're, it's all estimates, right? So a lot, we're, there's usually several of these type of warrant articles that are in there. And it's basically just us being able to close the year with having our bills paid, right? I think that's the best way of understanding it. It's like, oh, hey, we, the town has to approve this, so at the town meeting, we ask for the approval so we can close the books.
Yeah, and another way, I guess this, this eighty-six fifty from last year would have been, free cash, would have been moved into the current year's free cash. So it's money that we didn't expect to have anyway. We got it in free cash. But then the vendor sent the bills, and then now we should, assuming it's a valid bill, we should pay it.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, passes unanimously. Alright, so we'll move on to the next one.
Excuse me, kid?
Yep.
I've got a minute.
Alright, thank you.
See ya, Doug.
See ya.
Have a good time.
Yeah.
So the next one is an example, so article two is an example of what, what I tip, and it's tough to see up there. Let me see if I can blow this up a little bit. But, ooh. So this is a, this is typical of what we would see for an entire section of our budget. This here, I pulled the section that kinda pertains to just general town government. It excludes, you know, the school part. I just pulled out a little section. So this is kind of another.
Yes, is, okay. So in general, when we, when we get to that, this point of the meeting, we would be, say, Mr. Moderator, you recognize us. We move to, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate one million five hundred twenty-three thousand dollars for general government. Finance committee recommends.
And then, same thing, we move, you know, any discussion? And typically on, on items like this, we kinda, we breeze through, for the most part, there's not too much discussion around because the finance committee and the board of selectmen have met, gone over all these things and really identified any changes that need to be made. So these are kinda, for lack of a better term, almost housekeeping. I mean, there could be certain items of the budget that come up that people wanna make, make note of or make comment on.
Yeah, and certainly, this is, this is the time to ask the questions too at town meeting is, on, on, on these particular items because most of, most of this type of section is gonna be raise and appropriate. So like we said, raise and appropriate is what you're gonna be paying in tax.
I have a question, yeah.
Sure.
To the finance committee.
Yeah.
Several of the people we interviewed talked about the need for future planning, three years down, five years down, further. To what extent does the, the work that you do, you want your appointments, something maybe there multiple years, but actually allow you to future plan? Or is your focus ninety-nine percent, we need to get through the year and balance and raise the appropriate amount of funds? And it comes up in, I imagine, initially, you know, this, what's the contents of this slide?
So the, just speaking for myself, the outlook has only really started to extend over the last, I would say, call it maybe five, six years. I would say really when we, when we first got the town administrator, there was an emphasis put with our, with our past town administrator, an emphasis put on beginning the capital outlay committee, which really was a five-year, look at the five-year needs of the town through the departments and, and start to plan. And then the new, the current town administrator took that to another level where he's looking at the, both with the, with the capital outlay committee, discussions with the schools on a much more regular basis than I would say has ever been done. And, and really looking at the budget on more than just a one-year frame, but in a multi-year, multi-year plan. To, to kind of, one, point out issues that they see coming down the road, but also to start planning for it. Finance committee is, well, we have a ability and a, I'm not gonna say focus, but we do need to be looking into the future. We're also, we don't set policy, so it is our job to look at what other, whether the departments and what the board of selectmen are looking at from a funding standpoint, and, and kind of take, keeping that in mind where that all plays in. So we do have all one-year appointments, but I think for the most part, everybody on the committee has a longer-term goal because they, they do look at things, everybody's here for the reason of the, making sure the town's in a better position. So I think it's just inherent that everyone looks at things on a longer term than just that one year that you're, you're in the position for.
So we have a motion and a second on the floor. Is there any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Here are none, passes unanimously. So next one we're gonna go through to practice, and this is another one that comes up. So there's a couple, there's a couple different things that come up via the Community Preservation Committee in reference to CPA funds. Let me slide, try to slide this over one sec.
Can we really do a splash pad? See, that's like a, all I need is ten seconds to get it on the warrant. So you should have one of these ideas on my head. Splash pad would be great. It's gonna pass unanimously there.
I got three grandkids, I gotta make sure I vote for that.
Doesn't that say a splash pad's gonna be an, yeah, what are they doing?
What you have to really take note of is specifically the location of the splash pad. Which will make, will make sense to some and not to others. Would the vice chair of the CPC like to make a motion?
Sure. I'd like to make a motion that the town should appropriate two hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars from the CPA undesignated, unreserved fund to be expended by Parks and Recreation for the construction of a splash pad between Chase and Summer Street and North Dyton.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
What is the location between Chase and Summer Street that makes it so funny?
The little sliver of land between, between Robert Wood's house and Summer Street. Yes, sir.
Does that allow for the payment of a lifeguard?
Well, it's a splash pad, so I don't, shouldn't need a lifeguard, but. So one thing too, I just wanna go, go over real quick on a serious note too, is if there was any discussion on any particular article in the town meeting, the person would come up to, you'd give your name and address for the record, and then you would proceed with your, 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 your portion of the discussion. Anybody, anybody have any discussion where they're opposed to this? Make it, no, everybody's, everybody's on board, huh? Yeah, so just from a, a community preservation, and you'll see here, so the Community Preservation Committee has the ability to make a recommendation as their stewards of the CPA fund. So you typically won't see a board of selectmen, or you absolutely will not see a board of selectmen or a finance committee recommendation on those articles. There's always one that's housekeeping, which appropriates different, a certain amount of funds to each category for CPA. And then there's other projects, like, like this example given here. So the next thing we have, and this is, this one's a little bit different, which is to fund, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate or transfer from available funds, twenty-five thousand to be deposited into capital stabilization fund, and sixty thousand to be deposited into the stabilization fund, or take any relative action thereto. Come on, Mr. Gail, play along.
I'd like to make a motion, you know, for thirty-five thousand.
Which one?
That one.
So it's two different, there's two different.
Yes, I know. So this is my question to you, because I, I live with a town of sixteen.
Yep.
I tend to benefit of seeing town halls under three different moderators. And this is the part where they seem to vary the most, which is the extent to which the moderator is allowed to assist people when they're trying to make a motion to amend.
Yeah.
And I've seen people say very strictly, it's like, just, you have to say it, this is legal. We're making, this is a legal requirement here. You have to put it in a proper legal form, and then we'll vote on it. If you can't do that, then I'm sorry, we can't talk about it. Others will go to another extreme and say like, let me help you through here. So what are the parameters that the moderator has in assisting people who are trying to make a motion to amend, but they just can't spit it out in the precise language necessary?
Well, one other kinda caveat to that is amendments are actually supposed to be given in the written form. So that, that may be something we take, in, in my opinion, and it's something that I would have to look into a little bit more to see, you know, what is, is allowed. I myself would like to help the person who's obviously passionate enough to stand up and make this amendment, would like to help them get to the point where they can actually make it, and then let the, you know, the floor of town meeting decide whether or not they agree. I would not hold somebody to be like, oh, too bad, so sad you couldn't make it in the proper. whether or not they agree. I would not hold somebody to be like, oh, too bad, so sad you couldn't make it in the proper way, but that is one, one piece of that puzzle where it is required to be, any amendment is to be handwritten. So like in that instance, I would be, take a second, write it out. Nancy Gula is great at this. You'll see when Nancy gets up and starts to do an amendment, she's, like I pay attention, she's writing the whole time. She knows, one, it's a requirement, and I think it helps you work through that language. Just to give an example of that, you know, Mr. Moderator, I'd like to make a motion to amend that we vote to raise and appropriate or transfer from available funds. Fifty thousand to be, you can almost word it the same exact way in this instance and just change the numbers. This is kind of a simple, you know, way of, example of it. I know we had a big one at special last year around like the bylaw change with, you know, with the finance committee, where that had a lot of language in that thing. Those get difficult.
Well, because it's, it's the weird thing of, so you have the article and then you have somebody who wants to change it, so then you vote on the change and then you have to revote on the article as changed.
Correct.
Right? And if you do that over and over and over again, it's like, yeah, it's, it becomes quite, because then you're like, what am I actually voting on, you know, so it does become.
Well, and that's, then that's as, part of my duties is to clarify to the voting body what step we're really on. You know, that this is on the amendment to change it from twenty-five thousand to fifty thousand. And then you vote, so now it's been amended, now we're going to vote on it in its entirety whether or not it passes. Which, yeah, can get a little sticky. And I feel like a monetary article is a little bit simpler because you're usually just changing the number. It's, it's the bylaw stuff that can get. But that also kind of just speaks to the volumes of why it's so important to have a written amendment, just to help you work through it. And I don't see why, I don't see any reason, I'd have to almost defer to town council in that instance to see how, what is my ability to, you know, assist in getting to that point.
Yeah, a lot of times that's one of the main things that town council is there for is to help with that. Nope, that's not right. Yeah, that's okay.
Yeah, so that's a good example of that, like trying to make that.
And at least telling you that that's valid or that's not valid.
They would, you know, would come back, that's an improper motion. Start over. But I think, you know, like I said, I would try my best to, you know, get us to that point where we can move along too, because sometimes it does get like that. I don't think it's anybody's, you know, a fault of anybody, it's just some of these things get so confusing that it's, it's impossible to decipher.
Can I, can I ask one question?
Sure.
Yeah, and it's a question that we have asked all the moderators in the past. Uh, just to combine that number, that article is where, is, is for a total of eighty-five thousand dollars. If I wanted to amend that to be a hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars, would that be appropriate?
See, in that instance, I would, because it's like, I'd have to look back at like, you know, the minutes from the last meeting. Would we, do we typically piggyback and put them both in one?
Typically, we'd, we'd have two separate.
Would be two separate articles. Right, so it would be a little different.
Yeah.
I did this purposely to make it kind of confusing.
Yeah.
So we would talk about it and work through it. But yeah, so typically like you would have just capital stabilization, a separate article, just for stabilization. So it'd be a little less quirky.
So if we, and just for example purposes, if we had one for capital stabilization for twenty-five thousand and someone wanted to amend to a hundred and twenty-five thousand, would they be able to?
Absolutely. It was, but at the end, so the amendment would just be, would be voted on like a simple mo, like a simple motion. But the final vote, so once amended, then it would go to the two-thirds required for, for any stabilization vote.
Most, and I'm not going to say all moderators, but most of them in the past have said that you can go down, but you couldn't go up because not everyone at the, not everyone in the town was made aware of the higher dollar amount.
Well, so I, you almost have to defer to the finance committee for a recommendation, because right at the beginning of the meeting, you're gonna make note of what's available in free cash. So I would say how, I, you can't really stop somebody on the, on town meeting floor from making an amendment.
So they could make the amendment, but then whether it was our recommendation.
Right, and then you, I mean, I guess it would, that would be my thing is, yeah. It would be your duty to be like, yeah, we don't have the funding to make that happen, so. But I, there's, yeah, let's see a circumstance where the moderator could stop an individual from amending.
Somebody can make the motion to amend it, but then in order to discuss that, to determine the money's not there, that amendment at least has, still has to be seconded to have discussion.
Correct.
And then they can, then you can say, we just don't have the money.
Right.
But it still has to be seconded.
Okay.
Yeah, I wouldn't, I wouldn't say, I mean, again, it would be a question I'd have to ask town council and like the Mass Moderators Association. What you're, you, you really have no, I wouldn't think I have.
Well, you would hope.
It wouldn't be a point of order thing, it wouldn't be, you know.
Well, you would hope that if somebody did that, right, without understanding the ramifications of them, themselves making that suggestion. And you went to the finance committee, the finance committee said, if we don't have the money, that everybody that was at the town meeting would go, oh, we're not going to approve that because we don't have the money, right? So like you hope at some point some common sense kicks in with like the rest of the people there.
Well, that's the importance of discussion and having somebody step in.
It's kind of optimistic, yeah, it's true, but like, you know, you know, that's kind of the finance committee's flaw.
Mr. Moderator, I have a little question.
Well, we haven't, we had an amendment on the floor, but it was never seconded. And it was kind of an improper motion.
And Peter said.
No, but just, does, I mean, does everybody understand the steps to that? So what, for all intensive purposes, purposes, Mr. Gail, we're just gonna, we're gonna move on to the next one. And I'm like, really, I keep losing my slide like I'm completely slid over for some weird reason. It'll come back. All right, so the next one we had up was to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate and or transfer from available funds nineteen thousand to be expended by the conservation agent for the purpose of a drone camera system and associated training or take any action relative there too. And this board of selectmen and the finance committee do not recommend. So I'm going to play, I'm going to play the role of, oh, you want to, you want to, go ahead, Jonathan.
Mr. Moderator, Yogi Bear to Piggy Basket Lane. My comment here is.
Well, this hasn't been motioned.
Well, you didn't give me a chance.
Okay, you said my comment.
Well, first, first of all, my comment is I have a disability. Do we have a portable mic?
I do.
I'll take it.
I do.
Thank you.
You can unravel it.
So I'm on the portable mic now.
Yeah, there you go.
So I've become town moderator, slideshow presenter, conservation agent, and Vanna White. Oh, it tastes really good too, by the way. So in all ser, in all seriousness, I make a motion that we table this, but I would like to put it to a vote by hand raising. So. A motion has been made to table via hand vote. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion to table. A non-discussion motion. So we've been asked to do a hand, hand count. Can we please close the doors and have everyone remain seated? And please have the counters come forward. I'm going to steal you, you're going to be a counter. I'm going to steal you as a counter. Only going to have one counter, it's not a very big crowd.
Just stand right there and just count.
All those in favor of tabling Article Five, please raise your hand. All those opposed, please raise your hand. The eyes have it. With a ten, ten in favor, one opposed. Motion carries to table. Article Five.
Second, second reference of a future own and second reference of the splash pad. I want to lend it, it's great.
All right, so next, and I, I just, this was a little bit silly, but I felt it was also appropriate.
Just a question.
Sure.
So I understand that by tabling it, it gives the possibility of discussion. So administrators do have two different things, but for somewhat in-town meeting who absolutely is opposed to a particular article, that the request to table versus the request to simply see if everybody will vote no, because it's probably the same people that will say don't table or yes, table or vote no or yes, vote no. What, why would somebody choose one avenue versus the other, simply to end the discussion?
Yeah, if it's, you're kind of suppressing all, all discussion on the matter. You'll, you'll see sometimes too where the, you'll, we'll simply, I'll, I'm going to give an example from my Parks and Rec perspective. Um, where we, I had a spending article, I want to say in twenty-two, where like after going before capital outlay and, and going through all the steps, it just got to the point where we simply didn't have the money, but the warrant article was already there. So we simple, just simply just didn't make the motion. You also have the capability of just passing by the article. No motion is made to handle it in any way, shape or form, you simply skip it. So there's a couple different ways where you would sup, you know, could almost suppress the discussion on it. Yes, they.
Yeah, can you table something and then bring it back at a later time? Because I know we had those issues in the past, right?
So.
Where, you know, something, you know, full wait, full table for now, but it didn't know what it could follow, and then they bring it back up.
So that's something that I really need to, you know, wrap my head around with and would rely heavily on town council for, because there's, you know, the, usually the sentiment behind table is to indefinitely, you know, so for not the remainder of that meeting. So in my opinion, from what I've read of Cushing's manual, if it has been tabled, it cannot be discussed at that meeting. Um, it can be drawn up at a table, which means a future. So yeah, if we have, if we have a special, it could be brought up. That too is another thing I would have to research. I'm not necessarily sure that it would act, would have to be included on that warrant because it was tabled at a prior meeting, so you simply could motion in the next meeting to bring it up without it even being published in the warrant, but I would have to do a little research. Right. If it's tabled, that's it.
But I, Mr. Moderator, I believe that what can happen is a motion could be made to, once the article is read, a motion could be made to move the article down to, for example, later in the, in the, um, meeting, can't you, to, to move it so that it may coincide with something else that's on there? So I could have made a motion, for example, I don't know how many, to have it be taken after Article thirteen if I thought Article twelve was related to it.
You can, you can, you can motion to table to the end of the meeting, you can motion to table to a future date, say like special town meeting. You can motion to table indefinitely. And then at the end of the special town meeting, somebody can motion to reconsider the motion to table and bring up the table again, because the meeting hasn't.
Right.
Those are kind of like the four really big, broad picture elements to table in that, that we can do at the town meeting.
And I've seen instances before with like motion to table to special town meeting. You technically can't motion to special town meeting because there has been no date or special town meeting warrant established. Um, so typically it's motion to, you know, table indefinitely. I'm trying to piggy, I'm trying to just cycle through what you just said, Jonathan. Can you just recap for me quick?
Sure. My question was, could I have made a motion to take that out of order and move it down, for example, to take Article fourteen, let's say it was Article fourteen, to move it between Article thirteen and fourteen for reconsideration to come up at that time, because I feel it's more relevant to Article thirteen.
Think we, we did a couple of years ago have something similar to that where the articles just ended up being mis, misordered. And using your example, if number eight passed, but number thirteen didn't, then that made number eight avoided anyway, so it made sense to change the order.
So for example, I could, I could have asked, I'll put it another way too, either in terms of moving, based on what I think your next article is, could I have asked that we vote on, I'd like to make a motion that we, we move this article to
I think you would take, not to cut you off, I think in that instance, the, the most appropriate way to proceed would be to take the article that you believe pertains to this out of order. And this actually, so this is a great example because, so what I had for an example for Article Six was bylaw change, which was to see if the town will vote to adopt a new drone prohibition bylaw under Article seven of general town bylaws as follows. No one shall fly a drone or any other UFO in the skies of Dayton at any time for any reason. Any offender of said bylaw shall be sentenced to sixty days of community service maintained in the North Dayton Splash Pad and up to a hundred and ninety-nine dollar fine. So that, that's a great point because, you know, if we approve the conservation agent to purchase a drone and then we outlaw drones, that, that is a fair point, but I would say.
You have approved the splash pad and you say that you're going to make the penalty community service at the Splash Pad.
But then we'd have to have, then we'd get into, you know, really get into the dirt with motions to amend.
Right.
You know. I mean, these are all things that, that, you know, very well could happen.
Mr. Moderator, for clarity and that one person in the audience would probably like to know, would a magic school bus be considered a UFO?
No, you identified it as. I would gladly, gladly be the enforcement officer of the drone bylaw. So I know we've had some discussions too around bylaw changes. Um, there's only a couple different bylaw changes that require a two-thirds vote. Zoning, zoning and planning bylaws require the two-thirds vote, but our general town, town bylaws just require a simple majority. Um, so something like this would just take a majority vote to pass. And that was actually, that's a great example, Jonathan, of taking things out of order. I mean, that's really, you know, watchful eye of the town residents to be looking forward. Uh, well, one, reviewing the warrant prior to the meeting or leading up to the meeting and then during it to, to bring things to, you know, to the body's attention to, to address things like that.
You got any more to add?
Yeah, of course. And then the last one I had, because again, this is something that's been coming up rather often. No, I just, I, oh, I did it. It only took me to the last one to figure out how to use my computer. So again, pilot agreements have been something that have been coming up quite a bit. Um, so the last example article I had was just, um, to see if the town will vote in accordance with Mass General Law, Chapter fifty-nine, Section five, Clause forty-five, as amended by Chapter eight of the Acts of twenty-twenty-one, to authorize the board of selectmen to enter into a payment in lieu of taxes pilot agreement with Super Sunny Side Up Solar Farm LLC located at seventeen twelve Dayton Street, Dayton, Mass. zero-two-seven-one-five, to construct a photovoltaic solar facility with an expected nameplate of five hundred megawatts alternating current. Uh, said tax agreement on file in the town clerk's office or take any action relative there too. Again, I think Peter outlined it for us great earlier that, that, why it's advantageous for us to enter into pilot agreements with, um, with these type of facilities, just because it is beneficial. Um, instead of putting the board of assessors through the wringer to establish, um, a tax value. Um instead of putting the board of assessors through the wringer to establish um a tax value, um. Yeah, this is one that I wanted to include on here too, cause I feel like in the moment when you're in town meeting and you're, especially when you read the warrant. There's a ton of language there that doesn't really um. Make any sense, um so that's why I just got, I wanted, you know, a little bit of a further explanation. Yes, Mister Gale.
Did somebody explain to me for their purposes of this article? What it's gonna do for the town, is it gonna generate any revenue or is it gonna cost, is it gonna reduce our electric bills? Through the grid system or where is the power source gonna be located and what's the corporation behind the project?
Alright, so I'm gonna act as.
As Nancy.
As Nancy. So that's, I always try my best to try to really grab, this is a tough one for me, so this is as much of coming to my own understanding as it is everyone else's. We typically, so tha- that's a great question, because it does say that the agreement on file is in the town clerk's office. So I think it would be helpful to have this information available when these warrant articles pop up. Because Nancy usually gives us, and and this is not a slight of Nancy at all. She usually just gives us, this is advantageous for the town because, but we typically don't get that answer. As to what type of revenue it does create, um. So I think that, you know, like I can't, I can't get, I don't wanna make you up a fictitious. Fictitious, because, yeah, so in essence, you know, we could say.
These kinds of things do have a ramification. That somebody could ask, and I think we just need to be prepared for it.
Jonathan, I think that the board of assessors does bring that information. And I'm sure that they don't wanna read off all twenty years. But even if you asked for the five years, I I mean, they should be able to provide that. They should, they should have a copy with them.
And I only ask you that because I would assume that what the moderator would be just, is simply say, you know, is there someone here? Who can address the question that, you know, a number of the audience has.
Right, and that would be the board of assessors that would be answering that.
Yeah, I feel like, yeah, we typically just get the, this is why it's advantageous, but to be fair, nobody has also. Typically asked that question. So that's a great point.
Yeah, or or even the what the total revenue number is over the, over the life of the agreement.
Well, I know just to kind of give like a similar example, they were talking about the um. Think it was that annual last year, they were talking about the associated cost of assessing like Aquaria. And and I asked the question, well, what are they paying taxes, like what is their payment in taxes? Does it justify spending, we'll just say, the eighty thousand to assess it? Um so this is like a similar scenario where, yeah, it's it's nice to know how this does benefit the town.
Yeah.
Does anybody have any, like, you know, just generalized questions around working through any of the warrant articles? I I mean, just, you know, to give you my kind of personal perspective is. As the moderator, I'm going to try to be as helpful as possible to, you know, all work together and work through. The motions like to Dan's point earlier is like, I don't wanna see somebody get stuck on something or, you know, let's let's move forward together. Like, cause like I said, if you, if you're, you know, if you're passionate enough to get up and speak on a motion or amend a motion. Um, then I, you know, I'm certainly there, I I believe, you know, I feel like it's my job to help. You and the voting body work through it, not to hold you to every little. Technicality. Um, and I certainly too, like, I'm not gonna know. I have no problem saying that, like, I'm not gonna know every answer, I'm probably gonna lean on town council if something comes up, just like the, like the past ones have.
And I say this not as a resident, but as the D A coordinator in all seriousness. And I know you and I have had this conversation a little bit, and I've I've spoken to, I met Laura a little while ago, we talked, and I'm gonna speak to Dave too. Is just to ensure that everyone up at the front, first of all, um whether it's the FinCom or the members of the board selecting. I know you will have a mic. But to ensure that when anyone else is speaking, they have a mic in front of them, the mic is on. And they can speak up at times, because even with a mic, some people will talk like this, and you really can't hear them. So I would ask to ensure that, and then second of all, um the part that I was seeking to Laura, I'll speak to Dave about too. Is to ensure that we have portable mics with the P A system. Working, so that for anyone physically or otherwise can't get up to the front for a variety of reasons. The mic can be brought to them and that it's fully charged and available and ready to rock and roll.
Now, you know, I'm fully in agreement with that. Um too, sometimes somebody's just sandwiched in the middle and it's like, you don't wanna put them through all that when we can run them a mic, um. I think it speeds up the process too, to be honest with you, instead of, you know, wait, somebody come and walking down, you know, if we have. This is always a, um. Like the poll workers are always in the, they're in the audience anyway, correct? Or I should say the counters. Like I would say, yeah, if there's a couple people that are.
Most of the time they're, they're um in the lobby.
Okay.
So, but I I could definitely talk to them, um.
Yeah, if we have a couple, a couple of the counters are willing to, you know, just work one side of the aisle or either and pass the mic, I think it'll, it'll be helpful. Yeah, I I have noticed that too, with even just passing the mic along the table, sometimes it's, you know. It's uh, it's difficult, the acoustics in the auditorium are not like the best anyway, so. Go ahead.
Sometimes having those based on helps, cause there can be feedback if microphones are too close together. So that's sometimes why we go every other person or one per table. If it's, it's different with these mics than it is with those.
Right.
So, we can definitely do our best, we could get some new equipment, so we're definitely excited to put on some microphones.
Right, cause you're relying on their system, correct? Oh, are you? Oh, that's good, cause we have the ability to sound check and test mics and.
Basically, the story of us, so it's like one on the camera, one on sound, and one is up, a mic from there.
Right.
And usually works and people wave most of the time, unless they stop speaking, went out with the mic, and we can't help them too much, they don't want to.
Right. Well, no, that, I mean, that, and that's part of my role is to wait until you have a microphone.
Yeah.
But I think just more importantly, from for the finance committee and and board of selectmen members is just making sure, you know, and I'll kind of give you a. Can't hear, it's. It does, it does at times become difficult, so, yeah, well, we're all gonna, we're all gonna work together.
I just, that, I mean, I've gotten several calls from residents who will say, when somebody's up there and they're speaking about something, sometimes I can't hear them, I don't know what they're saying. And these are residents who are, in some cases, you know, they don't have a quote disability unquote, or they have itself identified as even having a hearing loss. But they just, when the mic's not on and they're sitting towards the back, they just can't hear.
Yeah, you just can't, I mean, yeah, we experience that quite often, even even in this room.
What'd you say?
Does anybody else have any questions just around warrant articles and? Yeah, so just, um in conclusion, you know. Uh I just wanna thank everybody for coming out um and attending, I hope this was helpful and encourages you all to participate in our upcoming annual town meeting. Um it's being held on Monday, June tenth, twenty twenty-four, seven P M. At the Dyson Hobbit Regional High School Auditorium, twenty-seven hundred Regional Road, North Dyson, Mass, um zero two seven six four. Um please provide me any uh email or feedback you have on on tonight's slideshow, or if you have any questions, um you can reach me via my email. At ksmith@dyson-mass.gov, um I always welcome public input. Uh so something that I'd like to continue to do, I think it's it's helpful, and if we can start spreading the word and get more people. Out and involved and educate each other and learn from each other, I'm just gonna make the town meeting process just, you know, better for everyone, so.
Mister Moderator, can I make a motion to be adjourned and the moderator take this one up again?